Ready to rock and roll?
Good morning, everybody. Call to order the special meeting of the Buchanan City Commission, Monday, September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Can we have roll call, please?
Sweden?
Here.
Yes.
Yes.
Lonnie?
Present.
Swen?
Here.
George.
Here.
At this time, we'll take public comments on agenda items only. If you have any public comments, please approach the podium. State your name for the record and have three minutes to discuss the topic. Okay, seeing nobody approached the podium, we'll move on to new business. Resolution twenty twenty-four dot zero nine slash two six, consider resolution. Filing of special assessment role for the Special Assessment District and notice of public hearing. Public hearing to be scheduled for October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four at seven P M.
How do you want to start?
Well, do you want to do? Do you want to hear from Smackus?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Did you get some of the questions we shot over? Maybe you can kind of highlight that.
Yeah, we did. And I want to apologize because we believe this meeting was October thirtieth, so I didn't have the intensity of getting you the answers that I that I would have, but I did bring some financial statements with me. Every month, we present all of our financial information to our board in electronic format, and it's an open. I mean, we're a government entity, so those records are public record, and they can be shared with you anytime. You'd like to see that stuff, we're happy to share it. What were some of the questions that you had for me?
Did Niles Township, has Niles Township accepted this?
Yeah, Niles Township is in the process of moving forward with paying their their part of it through an assessment, yes.
They approved, I called them after our meeting, they approved forty dollars for their assessment.
Okay, why haven't we received a bill for last year's assessment?
The last year's assessment?
Yeah.
Usually what happens is at the end of every year, we have our our audit, and in that audit, everything is totaled out for who is paid and who hasn't paid.
Okay.
And then we will invoice for any outstanding amounts at that point.
I've got a question on more psychology than anything. Is the other boards and the other communities as hostile towards this as the city Buchanan seems to be?
No, we've had, we've had no hostility. I mean, the Niles Township, there was some misunderstanding from what the the letter said and what the the public interpreted it at, but we've, we've had fairly positive interaction with everybody this year.
Then I got a question for Calla then.
Yes.
This comes out every month. Has the, have you received this every month or is the?
I did when Gainis was on the board, but not since.
Yeah, she would forward it.
I would forward from Tim, when Tim would send it on to me to forward to you guys. And then, but I haven't received one since Tim left. But we also been really having one.
I can add Kayla to our, to the distribution if that's what you like.
Well, as I say, if not, then then I can make sure that you get a a copy of this because I have it right here in me. So if you want to, if you want to do it that way, that way.
Either way, whatever works, I'll just automatically forward it on to you.
Well, I mean, you know, I mean, don't you think it'd be more convenient to just?
Well, actually, yeah, I do, because if if we we had this available and and I didn't, and I apologize because I didn't know that Tim was forwarding it on to you.
It's okay.
Because I would have been doing the same thing, but yeah, it like
It, it's just.
Like Brian says, it's public knowledge, so you know, there's nothing secret in here, and it would be a lot easier, I guess, if we had it up front and then and then and go from there. So, yeah, I'll try to make sure that you have a copy of this every time.
Can I ask this? Do you have like a website where the people, public can actually see it, that we could put on our website for it?
Yes.
Okay.
We're not very good at updating, I'll be frank with you, but we are working on.
That way, if like our residents would be able to just go straight to your website and see everything.
So, I'm I'm on the landfill board, right, and that's another like-kind ownership, shared board, and we base our budget to be self-sustaining ourselves. Help me understand why that can't be done at Smackus, because the uncapped component still continues to make me super uneasy with, you know, and especially with other members getting bills for overdoses and and really all we have to help control it is a a board member who's not really in charge of operations.
Well, across the entire nation, I I can tell you, there's very few ambulance services, numbers probably very close to zero, that are operating without some sort of subsidy. The cost of operating an ambulance service is really built into what we call the cost of readiness, so it's not the cost of responding to a call, it's the cost of being ready to respond to calls, that's so expensive.
Sure.
The unfortunately, we bill about, bill out about five point five million dollars a year in in fee-for-service bills. And we collect about two point two million dollars a year, so we write off close to fifty-five percent of what we bill out every year.
That's mostly Medicare, right?
Medicare, Medicaid, there's some contractual write-offs with like Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and then, of course, you have people that aren't capable of paying their bill because they're very expensive bills, so.
And so what do these communities, even in in this area, do that aren't part of this agreement?
Which, the the contracted communities?
I mean, in general, like, somebody that's not part, is every single community covered under a various agreement between us, Medic One, whatever else is left, like?
So, we have six owner municipalities here, and we have two contracted communities, so that would be Poagin and Milton, who pay a similar assessment to the owner municipalities.
Looks like exactly the same assessment, not similar.
Right, they're they're, they're not necessarily part of the formula for the breakup of population, but if you sat down and did the numbers, they're they're paying an amount very close to identical of what everybody else is paying. On the other side of that, you're probably aware that we took over Cass County's operations in August of last year. And they are actually, on a per capita basis, basis, paying much, much more money than we're paying here, and the reason for that is there's a lower call volume there, which means that cost of readiness that I talked about, that being ready to respond for calls is very, very, very expensive. And so so they're paying a higher subsidy in in that area than we're paying here in in our local area.
Do you guys have a facility in Cassopolis, or now that you've taken it over?
We have two bases. One, one station is in Duwajak, and one is in Cassopolis. Those are both municipally owned by those communities, and they provide them to us for use.
So you have to do all the staffing?
Yeah.
Where is, I mean, everybody's going to think I'm a real animal when I bring this up, but I've got to stick by my reputation. Basically, you're trying to get people from A to B and keep them alive while you get them to B. How ma, how much are we spending or overspending for overprotection? I mean, and I understand, you know, I mean, that's a really broad question. I'm sorry, Brian.
Yeah.
But I know the thing about it is, is everybody's worried about staying alive, and sometimes it's not always necessary. No, I don't want to go that direction.
Maybe a different way to ask it is, what's the difference in impact between a basic life support unit and an advanced life support unit?
Well, we can talk about impact, and we can also talk about cost. Approximately BLS units are about twenty percent cheaper to staff and to maintain. They can still do a lot of things that the ALS trucks can do. They can run twelve lead AKGs and EKGs and send them to the hospital. They can interpret them, but they can run and send them, and the hospital can receive those and and know whether or not they have a potential heart attack on their hands or not.
Sure.
They give some various low-invasive, high-benefit drugs. Sometimes they will carry Zofran for nausea, they'll carry, they carry nitro, nitro?
They carry Nitro.
Nitro, which is a heart attack, aspirin, which is a heart attack med, and glucagon. And epi, epi pens, yeah, for allergic reactions and the like. They can't do a lot of the other stuff that the paramedic rigs can do, so, but they do some of those basic things.
So circling back to the uncapped nature of our agreement, why do we have that language in there? What's, I mean, it seems detrimental to the communities that work with you.
Which which language are you speaking of?
Essentially, and I'm going to paraphrase, I don't have it right in front of me, that, you know, if you exceed your budget, you know, the cost of operation, we have to all pony up and write a check for whatever you go over budget by.
Right. Well, it used to be, back in the day, that everybody just set a subsidy amount, and everybody went by that subsidy amount, and what we got was what we got.
Right.
A couple of communities wanted us to move back to the exact now, or the exact language of the articles, which was whatever the shortage is divided by the population. So, this year, we are talking about, when we get into January, I mean, we probably can't go perfectly back to that model, but we are going to try to have that shortage amount already determined by that point, and then we'll work our budgets around that amount as we get closer to the June date. So, you'll have better answers and you'll have better input into what we should be receiving from the communities.
Are there other things that we can do to raise funds? I've always raised this question, Brian, and I always get the same answer, but is there ambulance services that are doing other things? Are there people out there that give grants?
Yeah.
People that want to donate because they saved their mother or something, I mean?
Yeah, but and we have been the recipient of about half a million dollars in grants now over the last couple of years. Those all had to go to education, and of course, education creates a workforce, and having us more people available for workforce keeps the costs of of the workforce down. So, we are, we are working from that angle. The state's been very successful in those programs. We've been very successful. We, we enrolled nineteen paramedics at the beginning of last year, between two grants, one was ours and one was Vebums. We partnered with them and with Medic One, and we brought nineteen paramedics in to that program. We also, after that, wrote a grant and got fifteen E M Ts educated. We now have a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars to be determined how we're going to use that in the coming year for additional education, but again, strengthening that workforce is one of the keys to to controlling costs here. There are some other things we can do for revenue, and we're actually talking about some of those things. One of them would be what we call a community paramedic. EMS, if you've followed healthcare at all over the last couple of decades, we've been really trying to move away from this reactive model of starting to take care of people when they're sick and do more preventative medicine. Obviously, EMS doesn't fit very well into that picture in the classic model where we are the reactive side of medicine. However, we do have we do have a a program out there right now that a couple of services have been using, where the paramedics actually go out to people's homes and do preventative medicine to help those people from having to go to the hospital. The the way we fund those things, in theory, is that the hospitals are fined very heavily for readmission. If somebody goes and gets treated at the hospital and then they are discharged and then go back, the hospital pays a penalty for that. So this program is designed to help the hospital avoid those penalties, and in which case, we collect some of that revenue to support the program. So there are some other things that we can do. There's not a lot of revenue opportunities out there, but we're trying to explore every one we can.
This may be an obvious answer, but is the reason the hospital doesn't maintain the EMS services as their number one client, at the economics of it?
I mean, funding and supporting us?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, um, some of that might be an accident of history. I mean, the 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 hospitals do, are an important funding source for us, because we do a lot of transports out of the hospitals to other places, and those, the last, last time I looked, about three-quarters of a million dollars of our real revenue comes from comes from those transports. This community paramedic thing, paramedicine thing we're talking about would allow them to participate even more in the financial picture for us. And they do some things, small things. They just provided us with a grant, about fifty thousand dollars, to put our paramedics through critical care, paramedic training and the like. So they do some stuff, and we do try to partner with them. We're hoping in the future that'll be a much stronger partnership, and they will be more involved in that.
Medicare's not paying none of this, though, are they? Because they don't pay for in-home care at all, do they? Medicare?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I'm only, I only understand what they pay for for ambulance service.
Okay.
It's, it's not a lot.
No.
But, yeah.
Medicare, all I can say from experience, Medicare does not pay for nurse home visits.
Yeah.
This was an independent unit, basically, that came out and talked to us, didn't they? Didn't we have a fellow come up into the meetings and talk about?
Right, that was.
The home care type thing, you know, as opposed to?
Yeah, that was the the director for Medic One. We've been working closely with Medic One, talking about a potential partnership or merger down the road, which we believe would be good for our communities. It would allow us to be more efficient, it would allow us to put resources where they're needed and control the excess of resources. As you were talking about, overprotection, there's a number of different things we'd be able to do in that model, and and so we're we're hopeful that that will work out, and we continue to work forward with them, but that would be one of those things, would be the community paramedicine part of that, which would be much easier to do as a large organization as opposed to two smaller organizations.
How does Medic One get funded now?
They have a milage, and and their funding program isn't isn't perfect by a long shot, but it's very similar to ours. They have owner municipalities, those municipalities each contribute an amount to their operation, and I think they get about one point five million dollars a year in subsidy from. What's that?
I don't think they have a milage. They just have a, the assessment agreement, right?
Some of them have milage.
Yeah, some of the, some of the cities have put villages in, but
Right. They have some issues where some of the municipalities are paying this percentage and other municipalities are paying less, and so they're still sorting that out, but it's very, very similar to our model.
So that's not, that's not administered at the county level?
No. No, we we have talked about, explored that option, and and I think that would be a good idea down the road to to move all of us to the county level, but that will be a decision made well above my pay grade, so.
What is the status of negotiations at Medic One? Because that is, we talk about funding length for what you're asking.
Sure.
It's an elephant in the room question.
Yeah, so this month, both boards voted to support us in the continued discovery phase of this. There are a number of different things we're working on. Some of it is messaging, some of it is developing presentations that we can now take to our individual boards. Hopefully, this board will be one of those boards we present to very soon to introduce the concept and and to talk to you folks, because obviously, it'll be your decision if that's something we do or we don't do. We are in discussions with a consulting firm that would walk us through the the merger process so that that went smoothly. We are working with a communications firm to make sure our message is clear and and effective. And we're also doing some field trips. We're going out to some places where mergers have happened recently to talk to the people that went through those. One of those would be Emergent Health Partners in Ann Arbor. Large, large organization, but they just merged with Huron Valley Ambulance and Life Care Ambulance out of Battle Creek. So, we're going there to try to steal their ideas. We're also going to be traveling to Life EMS to look at the community paramedic programs that they're doing. What we're doing right now is gathering as much information as we can so we can develop some good system once that, once that process is underway.
Is the county a part of those conversations right now?
They will be. They're not yet.
So the community paramedic aspect of it, is that something that would be controlled by the hospital? They would communicate to your team to indicate that, to avoid this readmittance issue?
Yeah, we would have a communication tool. We don't know exactly what that would look like yet, but they would say, hey, we just discharged this person, they've been identified as a high risk for readmission, and then they would fall on onto our radar, and we would start going out and making sure that person was filling their prescriptions, following the healthcare plan set up by the hospital, identifying problems that might result in that person going back and and fixing those problems and the like.
Has that really fixed any problems, though? Because you have the human factor there. A police officer can just, you know, administer Narcan.
Yeah.
And you have, you know, you have several individuals out there that just do it for the rush of dying and being brought back to life.
Yeah, this this would be more for people with chronic healthcare problems like COPD, emphysema. You want to make sure that they're using the medications that have been prescribed for them. You want to make sure they're following the healthcare plan that was prescribed for them. And so this would be to treat people with chronic problems. I don't know how well it would work for for opioid overdose.
Right.
But
You're not a social worker.
Well, I'm glad you brought up COPD, because the thing about it is, is there's lots of people out there, right here.
Yeah.
You know, that don't walk, don't exercise, don't eat right, and they expect somebody to make their lungs work.
Yeah.
It doesn't work that way. If you're going to die, you're going to die.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it sounds so hardcore, but it's the honest-to-god truth. A lot of healthy people die every day.
Yeah.
So.
It's also about like to make sure they have their medications, and they have the medications, and go get the medications, because a lot of people get it and then don't go get it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
That's a very common thing that we see, is people will get discharged, and they go home, and they put that whole hospital experience behind them, and they don't do any of the stuff that was built into their plan, and then they're right back in.
We also, we also do have a meeting with the Best Practices Committee at the county level in October, early October, to present this, all of this information to them. So there is, there is some county level involvement.
Well, I still, I want to bring up another point, because national health will let you die because of cost. That's the bottom line. They'll let you die. You know, they're not big, even though it's Big Brother to the extreme, they're not Big Brother. If you can't take care of yourself, it's not up to Big Brother to take care of you. And I mean, that's a whole nother, another argument, but I just feel we're running down a rabbit hole here and spending money that we really shouldn't, playing Big Brother or nursing home in the home, so.
Yeah, but this, this is money that's already being spent in penalties and fines that we can turn into a positive impact for the community. So, that money that's already being spent in negative ways can now be spent in positive ways.
And being, I mean, Megan's on the floor with nursing every day on third floor down there in Memorial, and I can tell you to avoid a readmit, to be able to service them at home is is lessening the strain on the nurses that have already seen this person maybe three or four times, so. I mean, that's a huge opportunity to avoid that readmittance, so.
Those fines are huge.
Yeah, so there's a huge benefit to the hospital to pay X amount less to ensure that they're going to have this service. So I think, I mean, it makes, it makes perfect sense, and if you're getting paid directly from the hospital and it's not through an insurance aspect, because they avoid the penalty and they pay out of pocket.
Yeah.
So there's another, I mean, that could be a huge program that I personally could, would like to see, just because I know I hear the stories every night when she comes home of readmits that they've seen too many times.
We, and we've heard some real success stories with this, with this type of program in other areas, so we are working hard to bring it here.
As I say, the person who spoke had had a lot of good things to say about the whole program, simply because, like I said, it it cut the costs, you know, from the hospital and everything, so, yeah, it was when I listened to it, it was, it sounded like a real beneficial program.
Yeah.
So, you know, without a lot of, without a lot of expenses in itself, so.
Yes. Anything else? Okay. Calla, do you need a motion on this one?
Yeah.
Someone like to make a motion?
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
I would so move.
Uh, we need, to approve to move on, right? We have to make the approval to move on to the open hearing, right?
Um, no, so just, I just need approval for the resolution twenty twenty-four, twenty-nine, twenty-six, for as presented.
Gotcha.
So what are we making a motion for?
So you're, this is the motion of making, we're going to go to a public hearing on October fourteenth.
Yeah, you got to stand there when it's on your eyes all the time.
You can stand up, Calla.
This is just making the motion for me to send out a public notification to every resident in the city of Buchanan, saying that you guys are going to have a public notice to, with the estimated cost that's on that public notice, and you're going to hear the public out, and then decide after that if you're going to you've already done the actual assessment district, now you're actually filing the assessment.
So do we need to talk about that amount in this meeting, or is that the next meeting?
You can do a little bit of both. If you want to change it, change the numbers before we send out the public notice?
Well, I'd like to bring up the point, why are we in an emergency meeting? Where, where's the dog chasing the tail, or?
The, if you're wanting to put it on the winter tax bill, it has to be submitted by October twenty-third. Your, that's so, the next meeting will be the final meeting that you guys can make the decision to go forward or to not.
So this was a communication issue? I'm not trying to beat up on anybody.
No, I just had to have four meetings between the four resolutions.
It's a timing issue before October twenty-third.
So I had to have it. So if you guys were going to go through with it, then we hit the deadline for the county to be put on the city residents' tax bills for the winter and not the summer.
Well, I'd like to discuss what I brought up.
Yeah, we'll bring it up, yeah.
That the assessment only be twenty-five dollars.
And pay the rest out of general?
Yeah, and in that way, the city will do, I'll be a lot more aggressive about attending the meetings, and, you know, because there's some things that go on at the meetings, got nothing to do with these two gentlemen that are here, that is extremely expensive, because people don't want to get along, from what I gathered in one meeting.
Okay, so you're talking about twenty-five dollars for five years or first year, or how are you guys wanting to determine that?
Well, I would like for the five years.
Oh, hold on a second on that.
Yeah.
The do we have it phrased here so we could review the rates annually?
So unfortunately, that had to go into the first resolution.
Okay.
And not into the second, so we can't review the rates
No.
at every year. So, but what we can do is if you set it at the twenty-five, we will just have to do for the next five years at your budgetary meeting.
Yeah.
We'll get the numbers from them for cost or percentage and put it in, make sure that we're budgeting for the general fund.
So could you do it in reverse then, where we approve it at the stated amount in the resolution, and then move to assess a lower amount at tax time, if we so choose?
No.
I don't know how I would, I honestly, I don't know how I would do it, without us redoing everything and starting from scratch.
This would just be a five-year commitment on the part of the city.
And if they do merge, I did find out that if they do merge, then at the time of the L four oh nine two comes out, we just wouldn't put that on the tax bill. It's almost like an op, you don't have to have an opt-out, because we're going to see what happens with them and where the funding structure is going to come, and let's face it, there's going to be a million lawyers involved in that time, and we're going to try and figure out there, but we won't have to charge. We won't have to put it on our tax bill.
Everything would have to be reassessed anyhow if they merge correctly.
Probably, is my guess. It depends on ownership. It depends on who they're covering. I mean, it's
I'm guessing they'd, they'd put something in front of us to say that we need to continue our commitment as previously agreed upon.
They could say whatever they want to, if they come up with some hellacious numbers.
We have to approve it, too.
Right. Is this going to really mess up the budget, or is this something I should drop really hard and fast? Should we go for the full assessment?
Well, it's about eighty thousand dollars a year that comes out of the general fund.
But it would only be half of that if we assessed twenty-five dollars, right? I mean, that, I'm just using the numbers, eighty thousand dollars, and that was at forty bucks. So twenty-five, if the city paid, if the taxpayers paid twenty-five of it. So twenty-five, if the city paid, if the taxpayers paid twenty-five of it, the city would only have to pay fifteen of it. So the city wouldn't be paying the full eighty thousand dollars.
It would be a portion of that, yes.
You know, and I'm just trying to find a compromise here because I don't agree with it. But there's not much you can do about our screwed up healthcare system. And it's nobody's individual fault, it's everybody's fault, so.
I think the biggest risk still lives in the uncapped nature of the agreement.
Definitely, but you're gonna have that even if you do the assessment for five years. So it doesn't matter who's paying it. I'm just thinking that if the city's actually got some skin in it coming out of their budget, we might pay a lot more attention and be a lot more aggressive at the meetings than what we have been. As far as cost cutting or building new barns or buying equipment, you know, I mean, I feel the ambulance service and I think we really need to go to that in that direction. We get you from A to B, you know, you got full contact with a doctor and if you're lost in route, you're lost in route, you know, and a paramedic's not gonna make that big a difference if you're that serious anyhow. I know that sounds very cold, but I don't really know how else to say it. I'm not trying to be rude or cruel. It's, you know, a lot of life-saving, a lot of life-saving stuff is just not really extending quality of life. So.
Are you making a motion?
I'll make the motion to.
Amend the resolution twenty twenty-four, nine twenty-six with the following as the assessment rate of twenty-five dollars per the five years.
Yes. She said it, I moved it.
Do we have support?
I'll support.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Bioski.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Slim.
No.
George.
Yes.
Weeden.
No.
Motion carries.
Can I ask why you voted no? Just out of curiosity?
I don't think that's the best financial decision for the city.
So you think the city, the taxpayers should pay it all and they should take the heat for it? I mean, this is a direct increase of fifty dollars per apartment.
It's, it's grabbing from Peter to PayPal, I mean.
I think we should turn this thing out off of our plates altogether, is my opinion, so.
But, cause I mean essentially the, the general fund is, it has, um, the general fund is coming, is generated by the taxpayers' money regardless of how you slice it, so you're doing it on the back end or the front end.
And that'll force us to generate more revenue.
The amount of exposure that opens the general fund up too is, is a big risk. Again, I think we should be working on a solution to get out of owning Smackus.
Oh, well that, yeah, okay. But that's, that's a long time down the road. And I feel being, participating in this as a city-owned entity with us paying part of the bill, it will hold our feet to the fire to do that. Whereas not paying none of the bill, who, why do we care? We can raise the taxpayers' fee a hundred bucks.
You can just contract in and not pay a dime extra and not have all the risk of owning it. That's how the agreements are right now, so. But anyway, we move forward. I think it's important we have an ambulance service. I just didn't agree with how it was proposed, that's all.
Okay, I was just, I was just curious for future reference.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. All right, uh moving on, uh M N R T F grant application for the St. Joe River Improvement Project presented by Mr. Rich Murphy.
Good evening, commission. Um you'll remember last year I was before you um for the D N R Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund in which we were awarded our first project from the Buchanan St. Joseph River Master Plan, which was the ADA accessible kayak launch. That is now in engineering, set to be constructed in the spring. So, this year we submitted an application for the reconstruction of our boat launch, was, was essentially the second priority from our master plan. A few months ago, when I submitted the application, you guys approved a resolution for twenty-six percent of the local match. Uh these grants are in, always in the neighborhood of about three hundred thousand. In this case, uh that was eighty-five thousand and some change. Uh we got our preliminary scores for this application back, um and we had a very good score. And so, um in can, uh meeting with my engineering team, we felt like uh we wanted to get some insurance points to our application to ensure that we could uh be funded. So, we have begun to retool our application. The lowest hanging fruit is just uh if we up our local match from twenty-six to thirty percent, so about thirteen thousand, I, I talked to Tim about this, so we, we believe we can do this uh for the uh next fiscal annual budget. I still will have the opportunity to fundraise, um to offset that cost. But this would give us uh essentially, you know, if you look at the graphic, the yellow is funded, the orange would be funded. We have serious momentum to uh our master plan. One of the reasons we're, I think we're getting funded, uh on a, this is our third consecutive successful application, is because we've done the work on the front end uh to do, to engage the community and to do a master plan which takes into kind of the holistic, long-term impact, so. So I'm asking for approval of, of the resolution before you, uh so we can get some more points and I can come back in December and tell you we've been funded, uh fingers crossed, so.
Very good.
Yeah, for the, the thirteen thousand, this is twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget, right? This was an identified resource that we said we needed to enhance and then make investments in. This is the actual boat launch itself, which when we accepted that property from the D N R, we agreed to maintain it. Has since not been maintained, uh on the verge of unusable. And it is a resource, you know, we identified that we would invest in, so for, to make our application. What do we, what's our amount that we're getting out of this? We're getting, our thirteen, or our investment gets us three hundred?
Three hundred and thirty thousand is total project cost.
Yep.
And we would be fronting ninety-nine in this case.
Okay.
Where would that money come from?
We have several different pots in the budget, grants and special projects, economic development.
Barb, has Barb got any money left?
Yes.
And Rich, we'll keep working to fundraise. Didn't you have fundraised the initial investment in the first phase, that was the eighty thousand?
Well, when we got, when we got the kayak launch, we raised everything for the local match. This, in this case, I, I talked to Tim, I think it's a best practice for the city. If we're gonna leverage grant monies, we got a budget for it.
Yeah.
So uh, we're building a lot of momentum, so we have more time to look at the budget. It won't stop me from trying to sup- offset that by other philanthropic and other grant resources.
How much was the kayak launch grant again?
Three hundred and twenty.
So we're, our investment's a hundred thousand and almost six hundred thousand dollars, right? Yeah, with six hundred thousand dollars worth of work, I think that's kind of the target on where we wanna be on these grants anyway, so. And it's, we gotta till twenty twenty-five to move those buckets around.
You know ahead of time it's easier.
I'll motion to approve as presented.
But the D N R, how long ago did the D N R throw this property at us? Does anybody know when the D N R gave us this property? There's nobody in here that's been around that long, do you know?
Peter, what is it?
The city bought it from Hubbard and I don't think the D N R ever owned this property. The D N R had use of A E P property farther east on the river. And there was the development there of the boardwalk and the fishing pier. But this Hubbard property was given, well, it was sold to the city at a reduced rate in the later nineteen seventies.
But the boat launch was owned by the D N R, wasn't it?
And wasn't it a grant aid site?
I'm not sure that the.
Or is that on the other side of the river? I know that was.
On the other side of the river and I think they're still there.
It is, yeah, I got a picture there, yeah.
And then there was that long developed boardwalk from roughly from our park to the dam.
Yeah.
And the ac- actually the access to that was off rip uh, uh Bridgers, off Commercial Street.
Commercial.
Yeah, there was, there was a parking lot there and there was one.
That goes way back.
Yeah, that was the eighties.
Well, my whole point was, is, is the D N R, I mean, this is a D N R grant, right, basically? So is there any way that we're gonna get more money towards this grant from the D N R since we took over the responsibility of some of their property is where I was going with this? Okay, what about ElectroVoice? Um, or not ElectroVoice, oh my gosh, A E P. Are we gonna be able to get more money from them?
A, A E P funded our master plan, which was this, why we're here. We, we took a year to look at uh the area, all the acreage.
Sorry, they did give us fifty thousand dollars to put that together, right?
It was like thirty-five thousand. So A E P is a player, uh they're also part of the master plan in terms of negotiating trails or even uh, you know, future access points from the river.
Are we still pursuing that master plan as far as the road though?
Yes.
Why?
Because now we have asked, we have more reason to have a, a good road cause we, we're gonna have si- significant high-quality access features on our river. So, I think it makes.
Well, okay, let me re, let me re-ask that question. The road was designed in the master plan to run straight down off Red Bud, correct? Or are we talking about maintaining the road that's already there?
No, we're talking about maintaining the road that's already there, possibly with redundancies.
For the, for the water, yeah, that makes sense.
I mean, culverts need to be put in, but the storm drains, drains need to be maintained.
Instead of reinventing the wheel, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
I like that, wow. Okay, well, at this time we'll take public comments on the uh St. Joe River Improvement Project. Uh please, keep your comments to three minutes, state your name for the record.
Can I ask a question before Randy speaks? Why are we doing public comments again?
Cause it's a.
It's a grant um requirement that they're, they call out on the agenda. So instead of having to go through a public hearing, they call it out on the agenda, so we're just taking public comment on those.
It's something that we've never done.
Yeah, it's, it's a newer thing, we see a lot with D N R lately that you don't actually have to hold the public.
Well, we don't have to pay the paper to publish.
I like that.
Thank you, Randy.
Randy, thank you.
Randy Hendrickson, City of Buchanan, uh commercial property owner and township resident. Um wearing the Live Buchanan co-chair hat right now, uh but also resident hat. Um I don't, I hope I don't have to say how important this project is. Um Patrick hit the nail on the head, property's at risk, um it's a gem for our community. I would say invest um as much as you can to not only maintain it, but to enhance it. It's a property that's been underutilized and just not in the crosshairs of any of city leadership in a long time. So I'd like to thank Rich, um Tim and you guys for getting to a, uh the point where we're at right now. It's incredibly important to ne- uh take this next step and, and make this happen. Um I also have to apologize, I have to leave, but I wanted to come and share that information with you first, thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Thanks, Randy.
Um Fran, to it, I live at thirty-two thirty-two East Riverside Road, I've been here since nineteen ninety-six. Um and I just, or two thousand and six, sorry. I just wanted to reiterate support for this um grant, it's really important. The St. Joe River is a great asset, it was the reason I moved here. It's been totally underutilized and it's just a, a gem for connecting to nature, for kids to be able to have recreation, adults, that, you know, the earlier conversation about uh healthy lives, like getting on the water is, you know, kayaking, canoeing, rowing, all those things are really important and can bring economic benefit to the town as well, so. Um Rich has done an amazing job and I think that's a really important process that we're working through, the whole riverfront um idea, this is just the first step, I think we have a ways to go in terms of ultimately seeing a community boathouse where we can have programming for the community, for kids and adults. So um I'm really in favor of it and just wanted to come and speak.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fran.
I've got one more question about this, oh, I'm sorry, Peter.
Hi, I'm Peter Leacy, taxpayer, resident at two oh one Moccasin. You know, as a community, we've decided we want a three hundred thirty thousand dollar boat launch. And it's even more important now because of the kayak launch there complements it. It's really developing our riverfront again, uh like it hasn't been in thirty years. And so the commission agreed to spend eighty-nine thousand dollars on that project to try to get a grant, which is kind of a roll of the dice, maybe we'll get it, maybe we won't. Uh if we don't get it now, we gotta go back next year, re-engineering possibly. So there are costs with not getting the grant, uh as well as with getting the grant. But now we have the opportunity to increase our odds by spending thirteen thousand dollars more now and we really increase the chance of getting this done now. So in my opinion, that's a good return on investment. We spend a little more now to get much more certainty that we're gonna get this grant and we'll get boats in the river again, thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Any additional public comments?
I have two correspondence.
Okay, yes, you do.
From Carla Johnson and from Don Reiman, um to say to vote no for the riverfront project. And you guys have their complete full comments and it will be listed in the minutes as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, uh at this time I'll take a motion on resolution twenty twenty-four dot oh nine slash twenty-seven. Dan, did you have a question? Did you have something else?
Yeah, I'll make the motion first though.
Okay, to approve?
To approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll support as presented.
Okay, further discussion?
This retractable dock, you know, it was, it's been since nineteen seventies, fifty years. I just wanna make this so that going forward, it's maintained because nothing's been done for fifty years. I mean, Rich, as much as everybody thinks it out, I have always believed in Buchanan's parks. We've got some beautiful parks and we haven't done nothing. And to see this start moving ahead is great. Just can't help but wonder how cheap it would have been to done fifty years ago. So I mean, I'd really like to look at this removable skid pier.
Yeah.
As to, you know, is it gonna be able to be pulled out of the river right there and just left there? Or are we gonna have to do something else with it?
They have some, I was just telling Patrick, they have new designs where you don't even have to get in the water any longer to remove the dock. It's almost like it folds down and it's, I can't explain, I'm no engineer, but it made sense to me to not get in the water, so. I think we can task Rich with that and find the people who are much smarter than us in that regard, especially dealing with.
I think Abbott Marsh wrote the, the grant or the proposal, so.
Right.
We should have a good, uh, good idea of what they put together.
Okay, no, it's good. Further discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Money?
Yes.
Slim?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Bioski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, uh next on the agenda is staffing needs in regards to uh wastewater treatment plant and uh city staffing here at the city hall, is that correct?
Yeah, so, I mean, I asked Mark to put this on the agenda so we can start talking about, you know, the inevitable succession planning and contracts that either coming up at the end of the year or just longer-term planning so we're not caught by surprise, so.
What are we looking at? Uh I think more specifically like the wastewater treatment plant, where we still, we're in, we actively into, like recruiting for as a.
Recruited and uh have a new employee starting next week to assist with the environmental compliance items and issues at the wastewater treatment plant. There's a lot of things in the permit that need to be tended to and I secured an individual that helps out with that.
Perfect, okay, and then we would still, long-term, right, cause we know that you're not gonna be here forever. We're anticipating that, is it a class B or level B?
We will need a B license at some point.
Okay.
And there's several options on that and I'm gonna be exploring those in the next few months.
Okay, and in the event that you're not running the plant any longer, is there contingencies in place to, that we would, I mean, it would be an expensive contingency?
We can run, we can work with like Rural Water, like John Holland, who we did in the past. And there's a lot of other firms like.
There's options on that.
Yeah, we got it.
Okay.
It's extremely expensive though, isn't it?
I, I wouldn't say so, I, I don't know, but Dan.
Okay.
So I would like. So, I would like.
I know a lot of communities do that.
Okay.
So, I would like the commission to authorize me to speak with Frank Walsh, since we have, uh, essentially free, I think we have to pay for, like, some materials and background check stuff, again, in our contract.
It's like eight hundred dollars or something, right?
Yeah, like eight hundred bucks. Um, so we can start the, the search on succession planning for Tim, and maximize him while we have him here until we get a final date.
Right. And I think it's no different than what we've done with the police chief, right? We had Tim, and then we transitioned over to Harvey, and I think that that's something in this city, Daniel probably agreed that we didn't always have contingencies in place or succession plans for anticipated departure of any staff member, be it Calla or Finance Department, and I mean, every business does it, and the city didn't seem to wanna do that over the years. It got comfortable with what they had, and that's great, but, um, we need to have those contingencies, and that means starting the search now to figure out how difficult that search is going to be, uh, and how long, so. But I, I will authorize it. I don't know, we can't really take a motion on it, but I will authorize that, is, I think we can motion it. Okay, I'll, I'll make the motion, uh, that we have Patrick Swam, Commissioner Swam, interact with Frank, remind me his last, Frank Walsh, uh, for the next step in our city manager's search, uh, deputy manager's search if necessary. Do you have support?
I'll second it.
All right, roll call, please.
Swam?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Weansky?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I imagine what that'll look like, too, is I'll just ask Frank to come speak to us, so we all can kinda get the same next step message together.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, if, uh, you were gonna have him.
Yeah, I.
Come in-house and, and, uh, and talk to us and, and, uh.
Yeah, I think that's what makes a little sense.
We went through a little bit of this process before and, and, uh.
Well, he'll be able to give us the pulse on the market, right, for city staffing, city municipalities and their searches and how those go currently as the market sits, so.
I'll, I'll ask him to come in, that's what I'll do.
Perfect.
I want to, um, the eight o'clock meetings for transparency readings, not just because I absolutely hate them, but I do absolutely hate them, but for transparency reasons, I would like to steer away from these emergency meetings. Um, I understand why it's good for working people eight o'clock in the morning, but it's not very good for the taxpayers, um, because they can't attend these meetings, and what we just did was pretty important, um, so we should have never had this meeting at eight o'clock in the morning. That being said, going forward, please, gentlemen, take that into serious consideration. I know Calla doesn't wanna stay here till seven, but she has an assistant, and Emma could be here, or your assistant is gone.
Yeah, I'm on my own.
When did she quit?
No, she got a.
She got, well, she got a scholarship to the University of Colorado. She left on, the day after the election.
Good for her.
She said it was last month or month before.
All right, well, so what, Calla? Well, I mean, you had Courtney in here, you had Courtney in here that one night. Emma's quite capable of writing down notes. So, I mean, it's not like you have to be here, that's my whole point.
I guess argument could be made, you're here already, so.
I'm here already.
So, I don't really.
I'm here when you're here, so.
That's right.
Right.
I think it is important to avoid them, but sometimes, you know.
Well, I mean, our county does it all the time, and there's a lot of people that really don't like it, but they don't make them change it.
In six years, I think this is maybe my third one, Dan.
Yeah, I just personally really hate getting up at six-thirty in the morning. You guys don't understand, I don't wear makeup, but I gotta get these things working, so I can come down.
All right, well, let's not go down that road. Uh, any additional public comment?
Do your hair, though.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I didn't do it very well this morning.
Okay, uh, with seeing no additional public comment, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Support.
Roll call, please.
George?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Weansky?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
You're adjourned.
Unless he wants to stay. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for being here so early, Tim.
That's right.
I know, and I wanna be at that. I wanna be on that one. I get paid for that one.